Happy Spring Day, everyone. We're going to begin with the invocation from Councilman Curtis, followed by the pledge, if you'll please stand.
Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the change of seasons and for a beautiful spring day. We thank you for this opportunity, and we acknowledge the responsibility of representing our fellow citizens at this council meeting today. We pray for the wisdom to make the right decisions to make the best improvements in our city. We ask for your protection over our policemen, our firemen, and our staff as they carry out their duties today. And, Lord, we ask for your blessings on the city of Tyler, the state of Texas, and the United States of America. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll begin with the minutes from February the 14th, 2024. It is approved. Second, got a motion by Winn, second by Curtis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're going to come down for a couple of awards.
This award, or actually a graduation, is for Cassidy Ingram. It's part of the Inference at Work program, and this is for your graduation of four months. And this whole program has been phenomenal. And when people get to bring their child to work for four months, they get to enjoy their kid. And when they come to do a council presentation, they leave their child with the rest of their workers. And their workers help change the diapers and help just play with the baby, but it's a great thing for their moms to be able to bring their baby to work. So it's a great program. We're glad that she's graduated, and I'm so glad that she's nicer to me than Broderick. So congratulations. Congratulations. You can have her back. Hold her if you need to change the diaper.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and we also have an award for Shawn Wilson, Fire Battalion Chief, 25 years of service. Is Shawn here? Well, here's for Shawn.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
You have item P1 before you. This is a request the City Council consider hearing a presentation and approving the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2023. I have Kevin Cash in here today. He's a partner with Gala, Morgan, and Petty. He's going to go over the details of the audit. In the spirit of fast-tracking this, I'm not going to really go into any detail. Just, it'll be repetitive, so I'm going to turn it over to him and let him go into the presentation and give y'all an update on how we progressed through the audit. And the audit is also going to the Audit Committee. It went on March 18th, so it has been reviewed by the Audit Committee. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing us to be here today. Before I get going, I promise I'm not going to go through this report in detail. The Audit Committee and myself, we met in detail last Monday, went through this, went through a lot of things, had a lot of great questions, had a lot of great discussion. And I appreciate their commitment to the city and what they do related to the finances of the city. Before I get into this real quick, I do've got, I have an audit team here today. I'm just going to introduce them. Jeff Lindemore, Casey Coats, Lily Sisson, Elizabeth Robinson, and Amanda Wales. And I appreciate their hard work in getting us to this point today. The process, we started the process actually all the way back in July of last year. Spent some time doing some interim work, came back in October, did some more, and then were able to get back on the field early part of January to start the final field work. Again, to get to this point today, and we appreciate everything. You do have everything in front of you, the presentation. I'm just going to kind of go through this real briefly. Awards and recognitions. We will submit, the report will be submitted to GFOA for your Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. This year, your fiscal year '23 report will be 38 years that you have received this honor. So I appreciate that. And again, this goes to everybody's credit here, and I'll acknowledge everybody here in a minute. Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for 17 consecutive years, and the Investment Policy Certificate of Distinction now for 13 consecutive years. On the report itself, it was an unmodified or clean audit opinion. This is the highest opinion we can render for the city. As far as the financial reporting, there were no material weaknesses noted, no reportable matters of compliance that we had to discuss with the Audit Committee on anything. As far as our compliance testing on your grant funding under the single audit, it was an unmodified, clean opinion. Identified the two programs there that we tested this year that were major programs, that's your airport improvement program and the funds you spent through your ARCA fund. Okay, at the end of 9/30/23, you reported a total net position of $602 million. You had an overall increase for the year in your net position of $31.9 million. Your total revenues and for your general fund exceeded your budget of $2.7 million, and a big portion of this, of course, was your sales tax. Total expenditures for your general fund for the year were under budget, $3.2 million, and your general fund fund balance increased $2.4 million for fiscal year '23. Next slide, this shows a breakdown of your total net position at the end of the year. $546 million is the largest portion of this, which is what we call your net investment and capital assets, net of the related debt against those assets. You had $75 million of restricted net position in various different sources. The negative thing you see there basically is the unrestricted portion, and again, this goes back to the wonderful world of Gatsby, when you had to adopt Gatsby 68, 75 years ago, having to put that huge pension liability on your books caused that to go into a deficit. And the acknowledgements, I want to acknowledge the Audit Committee today, Mayor Warren, Broderick, and Stewart, thank you for your time spent. I appreciate them so much. Thanks to Ed, your city manager, Blake, who is your strategic planning analyst. I appreciate all his work. And then this could not get done without your financial department, Kedrick, Lauren, and Lynn. They were great to work with, and we appreciate all their help in getting us to this point today. So with that, any questions that you may have of myself or the committee this morning?
Any questions for Kevin or Kedrick? Great presentation, very short. Thank you. All right.
Mayor and Council, this is an action item, so we need you all to take a vote on that, if you don't mind.
What's the action?
Just to approve.
Okay. Got a motion by Haynes, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kedrick. All right, zoning, Kyle, Z1.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. The first item is a zone change from PMX-D1 Planned Mixed-Use District to PCD Planned Commercial District. This is at Golden Road and Troup Highway. This is mainly just to bring the existing office building into compliance or conformance with the zoning ordinance. So as you see here, the, all the adjacent properties are generally commercial or institutional in nature. There is an apartment complex to the south, and so the Future Land Use Guide, this request is consistent with that as a mixed-use center. As you see here, there is a, an office building on the property. As it currently stands, the PMXD1 zoning does not have any adopted site plan or development standards, and so this would, this would achieve that requirement by approving this zone change and adopting these standards. These are typical for kind of a high-rise office building, and so they're typical of what's already there and brings that building into conformance. We did not receive any notices in opposition or in favor, and the Plan of Commission recommended approval.
All right, we do have a card here for Steve Roos, so if y'all have a question for Commissioner Roos or for Kyle, any questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Nichols, second by Winn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries, Z2.
This is a request for a special use permit to allow for an outdoor archery range on the west, southwest loop. The, all the, the property is currently zone M1 light industrial, which allows this, this activity with a special use permit. All the adjacent properties are generally, you know, commercial uses, zone for industrial. The property to the west is outside the city limits. This is what the property looks like. They, they do intend to install a archery range outdoors on the south side of the property. As you see there, I tried to overlay that. And so the, all the activity would be south onto, you know, all the, any arrows would be shot to the south. The applicant does own the property south of there as well, so they're the only impacted parties. Here's a closer view of that, of the, of the range, and there is a 10-foot catchnet on the south side to catch any overperformers. And so, and so we don't anticipate any issues with that. And the Plan of Commission, we did not receive anything, not anybody concerned about that. And the Plan of Commission by a 6-0 vote recommended approval of the special use permit for a period of three years.
All right, any questions for Kyle? Michelle Griffith also filled out a card to speak if anybody has any questions for her. If not...
Move to approve.
Got a motion by Nichols, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries, Z3.
This is a special use permit request for an at-home daycare, limited to six, six children at a time. This is on Fair Lawn Drive in District, District 3. The, so this is for daycare, at-home daycare, and the, all the surrounding properties are zoned and used for residential homes. As you can see, the, this is a house currently constructed, and they plan to utilize it for an at-home daycare up to six kids. Typically, these, these are found in residential areas. They are limited in nature because of how many, how many, how many kids can be there. And in a lot of ways, they, they can help, help the neighborhood have that, that service nearby. We did receive, we did receive five or six letters in opposition. We, we did have some that were retracted after the applicant did speak to the neighbors about kind of the scale. I think initially there was concern about, you know, 40 kids or 50 kids, but it's really only, it's only up to six, and I think that alleviated a lot of concerns that people had. But as it stands today, there's still a 28.88% protest calculation, which will require a three-quarters majority for City Council to approve it. The Plan of Commission by a 6-0 vote recommended approval for a one-year period of time.
How many, did you say? I'm sorry. How many people are still opposing?
There's...
Up to six?
Yeah, there's four, five, six. Yeah. Yeah, everybody that's still on there, on the map there, they're still opposed to it. But like I said, I, I think that the, I'm not sure if the applicant's here, but they did try to reach out to explain some of that, and some of the neighbors did retract their opposition after learning more about it.
We do have a card here from Latrice Bouhaba. If you wish to speak, if not, that's okay as well.
I'm here, and I'm okay.
Okay.
Unless someone asks questions.
All right. I will say this, since there are, there was opposition to this. I don't see any cards for them to speak, but if anybody is here that did not sign a card that wishes to speak against this item, are you here? So nobody's here that's in red, okay? Any other questions for Kyle?
Kyle, did you say these are common or are not common?
They are. They're pretty low intensity based off, you know, only six kids at a time, and, you know, something that historically you've seen in neighborhoods. And so we, we do allow that in residential zoning, but it is, it can be time-bound or condition-based.
Right. Okay. Kyle, is there any checks and balances on, we'd be approving up to six children. Is there, you know, if more, if the lady were to take on more, is there any checks and balances for that, or is that just the neighbors bringing that to our attention?
I believe it's, it's also enforced by their state license. That's going to limit that.
Exactly.
And then, yeah, if there's any, any questions that come up, we would, we would investigate that.
Move to approve.
Got a motion by McKeller, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Quick note, if you're in red and you're opposed to something, you ought to show up. Z4.
This is a request for a zone change from multifamily to single-family to allow for the construction of a single-family home on this property. This property is located within the Tyler North End planning area, and it does achieve, help achieve adding more homes to this area. So all the surrounding properties are multifamily. They are generally developed with a mixture of single-family homes and perhaps some duplexes and churches. This request is consistent with the plan for the area. They, they plan to develop a, a single-family home on this property. There was no opposition from any neighboring properties, and the Plan of Commission recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle? Move to approve. Who's the second from?
Me.
Okay. Motion by McGee, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries, Z5.
This is a zone change request from R1B Single Family Residential to R1D Single Family Detached and Attached Residential District. This is on Fardell Street. The applicant is requesting this change to be able to have a garage apartment or accessory dwelling unit on the property in the backyard. I believe they, they currently have a structure there that they want to utilize for, for that secondary accessory unit. The adjacent properties to the northwest and south are R1B Single Family. To the east are R1A Single Family, this location of a church. There is some, R1D to the north, the next block over, that was rezoned in the past few years for the same purpose, which was to allow for a garage apartment. And then there is also duplex, duplexes in the area. The Future Land Use Guide, this request would amend this to single-family and single-family attached residential. As you see, north of there, there is a Future Land Use Guide designation for multifamily, albeit all those properties are still single-family homes. This is, the property here is a corner lot on Fardell, and, and they do plan to have a, an accessory structure in the back of the property and utilize that as a accessory unit for rental purposes. I believe the applicant may be here to discuss that further. Of the notices that were sent out, staff did not receive any in favor or in opposition to this request. The Plan of Commission by a 6-0 vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve, Z5.
Second.
Got a motion by Winn, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries, Z6.
This is a request for a zone change from R1A Single Family to PUR Planned Unit Residential District on Sunnybrook Drive and 10th Street. This property is also located within the North End Planning Area, and the, primarily the, the properties to the west, east, and south are single-family homes. The properties to the north are developed as, are zone C1 commercial and are developed with commercial properties. The Future Land Use Guide has this property as single-family, medium-low density. This would amend this to single-family and single-family attached, medium-high density. And as you can see, the property to the north, that's currently a commercial property, is, is not correctly labeled there as, as commercial. So this request would amend this to, or amend the Future Land Use Guide. As you can see here, the property is generally built out all around this, this, these, these lots here, and they are at the corner of 10th Street and Sunnybrook, which has the connection across Sunnybrook that goes out to Frankston Highway. Here's the site plan that the applicant has submitted, which shows 15 single-story attached residential units at a density of just over 11 units per acre. The PUR zoning allows for this, this type of development limited to 12 units per acre, so it's, it's still within the allowance for, for PUR, but it's at, it's kind of at the upper end of, of that allowable density, density. As you, you can't see here, but the, the property to the north, which is the laundromat, does have their commercial driveway just across the street from here, and they, they access 10th Street as well. The site plan shows, again, 15 single-story units. They do show, they do leave a lot of buffer from the homes that are to the south, and then they do have common areas throughout the, the development. And so again, this is just over 11 units per acre. We did receive letters in opposition similar to the other case after the applicant spoke to some of the neighbors about really what, what they planned to do. Some of the neighbors did retract, retract their opposition. Previously, it was over 20% protest, and that, that has changed to just the, to 13.04%. And so it does not require a supermajority to approve it. The neighbors that did, or maintained their, their opposition were mostly concerned about some of the impacts to drainage. There's a, maybe a little bit of a stream or creek behind, between the properties that they were concerned how that, this would impact that. As you saw in the site plan, the applicant does plan not to do anything with that, just keep it as is. And then there was also some, some concerns about additional density in the area, and that the applicant is adding more homes to, to that area. But with it being in the north end planning area, that is kind of the goal to increase housing in that area, so this would achieve that. The Plan, the Plan of Commission by a 6-0 vote recommended approval.
We do have a card here from David Rainwater. Is it just for questions or, okay. Any questions for Kyle? Also, there are some people in red. I don't have any cards on this other than Mr. Rainwater. Anybody here that's in red wish to speak? All right. Move to approve.
Kyle, regarding the concerns about drainage, I mean, that issue's going to be addressed later in permitting, right? I mean, that, that's not been...
Yeah, that...
We know what the developer said, that there's still work to be done on that.
Right, yeah. It would be the same whether it got, it was changed or not. You know, they're still, they still have to be conscious about how they, you know, develop the property and not change the water flow and things like that.
Right. Any other questions? Move to approve these things.
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries, Z7.
This is a request from R1A Single Family to C2 General Commercial. This is on Troup Highway. The applicant also owns the, well, it's one property. They own the C2 portioning south of that. They intend to develop the property, and so they, they want to kind of clean this up and bring this part of the property into the same zoning as, as the commercial structure would, would be under. The properties to the north are, is a residential subdivision. Those are single-family homes, and then the surrounding properties are commercial. This, this is actually a, was intended from a zone change back in the 80s that they, they left this property as kind of a buffer, to buffer the residential area and whatever gets developed here. This used to be one big lot, so, you know, there was a lot more room to, to leave the buffer and develop it all. Since that, since the 80s, we, we have adopted buffer yard requirements in our code, which fulfills that purpose instead of, you know, leaving strips of residential zoning. And so the applicant will be required to provide a buffer yard between these, between their development and the homes to the north. These are some of the options that they have, between 10 and 20 feet of trees, and perhaps they have different options to achieve that. Likely, they probably try to maintain as many of those trees as possible. And so with that, we, we did receive one letter in opposition from this, for this request, concerned about, again, the, kind of the encroachment towards their, their property, but they may not have been fully aware of the other code requirements that would come into play. There's a 4.21% protest, and the Plan, Plan of Commission by a 6-0 vote recommended approval.
We do have a card here from Steve Meyer. Are you just here for questions, or you wish to speak?
I'm active, just to get that question.
Okay. This is the only card I have. Is there anybody here that is in red that was, wished to speak in opposition? Any question?
So Kyle, can you describe the buffer a little better? Is there any type of structure, or is it just the trees?
Yeah. The buffer yard prohibits any parking, buildings, and it would just be trees and green space.
So no type of fencing or anything?
They could do fencing, and so, so as you move down this chart or these graphs here or graphics, if you have, if you have a fence, you need fewer trees, or like a wall or a fence. But if you have a larger area, you don't need as much. So, I mean, they, they can put a fence in there to help shield any activity.
And the, the business is, what, what's the business that's going in?
It could be a firestone.
Firestone?
Yeah.
Okay. Move to approve.
Second. Got a motion by Nichols, second by Winn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries, Z8.
This is a request from Agricultural District to C2 General Commercial at the corner of Bold New Day Road and Pro Road. This is just to rezone this property to allow for more commercial activity on, on the property, which could be outdoor storage, storage warehouses, things like that. Pretty typical for, for...
which could be outdoor storage, storage warehouses, things like that, pretty typical for some of the existing buildings or developments in that area. There is multifamily to the east, and then just agricultural, which is likely to develop as, as commercial in the future. This would amend the future land use guide to general, general commercial for that area. Of the notices that were sent, none were returned in opposition, and the plan to commission recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle? Kind of quiet up here. Move to approve Z eight.
Second.
Motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Please, Kyle.
Thank you.
O one. Candace. Good morning.
I am here to present O one, which is requesting to amend the current ordinance for our Glass membership fees. So we have this chart that shows what our current rates are. So first off, I do want to make sure it's clear that these are annual rates, so you pay a one-time fee for the entire year. And so currently, for residents, that is thirty dollars, non-residents is forty dollars, youth is ten dollars, and we have a day pass right now for five. So we are proposing to increase the fee for resident and non-resident by five dollars for the next five years. It is time to increase our fees, after comparing other cities and just doing our research. It's evident that we need to increase our fees, but we don't want to make a big jump. The last time we made changes was in 2013, where we went from fifteen to thirty dollars, and so we doubled it at one time, and that was hard for some of our members. So we don't want to do that again. We want to make sure that we are meeting their needs, but not putting a financial strain on them, and give them time to prepare. So by 2028, we will be at fifty-five dollars for our residents, sixty-five dollars for our non-residents, and our youth pass, we will go up, it'll just go up five dollars at a time, we'll cap it at twenty for the time being, and then reassess if that needs to change later on in the future. Our day pass, we will go to seven, and then from there, we will increase by a dollar until we hit ten. And we are more than likely cap it at ten, unless we need to reassess. So after we did some research with some other cities, I went and just kind of found out like what they offered, how much they charged, and compared it to us. And here, you can see that, once we hit, go to thirty-five next year, if we move forward with that, we are still one of the lowest amongst our benchmark cities. And even in year five, where we're at fifty-five dollars for our residents, we are still at the same spot. There's not many other cities that charge less than us. Beaumont does offer their membership for free. I called them and asked them, you know, how were they able to do that? Their answer was that they really don't do as much additional programming outside of open gym and pickleball and the usual activities that take place at a recreation center, whereas at the Glass, we, you know, we're hosting seasonal events, camps, all of that, and so those things need funding and staffing, and so that is how Beaumont's able to do theirs for free. But that, I mean, once you compare, we still will be one of the lowest recreation centers around. Even amongst our gyms here in Tyler, even our recreation centers that are attached to churches, we're still one of the lowest. And so, we are requesting that the city council consider adopting an ordinance amending the Tyler City Code, Chapter Eight, relating to the Glass Recreation Annual Membership Fees.
And just so everybody recognizes, at the very top, that says annual fee, so when you see thirty-five dollars, that's not monthly, that's a year.
Yes, sir.
So when I first saw this, I thought, thirty-five dollars a month, it does a year.
A year.
So. Any questions for Candace?
Candace, sir. Excuse me. Go ahead.
I have a little question for you, Candace. I know we talked about this during the committee meeting. Any research yet on combination Fun Forest Pool with this for a combined package?
We have talked about it, we haven't quite made a decision or figured out exactly what that price will look like. So it's something that we have thought about doing in the future.
So Candace, great presentation. So the added fee is five dollars per year, right, titrating up to...
Yes, ma'am. So it'll increase every year, starting June first of that year.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So moved, if there's no other questions.
Second. Got a motion by McKeller, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Please, Candace. O two.
Good morning, good mayor, good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
At the December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two council meeting, the city council voted to amend parks ordinance by implementing a fee for athletic field light usage. The original fee structure was intended to gradually allow local leagues, individuals, and other groups time to budget accordingly. While the fees were intended to be implemented June first, twenty twenty-three, we pushed back the starting date to August of twenty twenty-three, to allow the leagues a little more time to prepare. The ordinance in place is as follows. Year one would be five dollars an hour per field, year two would be ten dollars an hour per field, year three would be fifteen dollars, and year four would be twenty dollars hour per field. Twenty dollars per hour per field is a median range for field lighting usage based on similar-sized municipalities, and would provide some cost recovery while still remaining affordable. After many discussions and meetings between the local leagues, park staff, and city officials, the leagues were asked to provide their own proposal based on another city's structure. However, this city never received a proposal as requested, so a compromise was presented by the Director of Parks and Recreation. The proposed amendment is that in year two, the fee per hour would remain at ten dollars, and would not go up until twenty twenty-six. This will allow the athletic leagues to prepare a little longer on how they will need to structure their fees in order to pay for the lights they intend to use moving forward. In twenty twenty-six, the fee per hour would be fifteen dollars, and in twenty twenty-seven, it would max out at twenty dollars per hour per field. This proposal was taken to the Parks Board on February the nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and it was recommended by the Parks Board in a unanimous vote. On March seventh, it was taken to the Quality of Life Committee, where they recommended to proceed with the proposed amendment as well. So it is requested that the city council consider adopting an ordinance amending the Tyler City Code, Chapter Eight, relating to the field light usage fee schedule.
Any questions for Leanne?
Yes. Leanne, in your investigation on what other cities are charging for their light fees per hour, what'd you find?
We found that there, it's not apples to apples, and it's very hard to find another city that does things the exact same way Tyler does things. And so, there was not a city that does it exactly the way we do it. Some charge for other things, some don't allow the leagues to sublease while we do, and so it was very hard to find. But across the board, it was, twenty dollars an hour was the median average if a city was charging for lights.
Okay, I don't have any cards on this item, which surprises me. I see some guys back there that live and breathe Little League. So does anybody wish to come speak, or you just want to kind of hear what we end up with?
We were just here to be here today, I think we're going to...
Come on up, come on up. Come over here. I've never heard you be, I've never heard you be quiet.
Says a trial lawyer, right?
Can you state your name and address for the record?
John Greensley, thirty-four hundred Woodbine Boulevard, Tyler, Texas, seven five seven zero one. Leanne is a fantastic person. I've got to know her over the last year. We have kind of began to bond, and I think we see, we're meeting and understanding the issues. Same with Allen, Ivan, everybody in the Parks Department, Rose Capital East, and I'm only speaking from Rose Capital East. We understand what's going on. I think we were surprised by this initially, but now we understand what's going on. We are trying, we've reached out to Little League International to pull other leagues in Little League, not Dixie, not anything like that, and find out what they are charged for lights, whether it's more, whether it's less, whether it's the same, so that we know what we're working with. We talk about sublease, we don't sublease. That's not something we're able to do at our park. It's just, we want to be good stewards of the park, good stewards of the city and our community, but at this point, we're still, you know, obtaining the data so that we can talk with Leanne about that.
So you're good with the rates, where they're going?
I don't think, I think he's... You're an attorney. That's a yes or no.
That's a yes.
You know, I don't have the data to answer that question. I do appreciate the fact that we have gone and given us another year for ten dollars. I think the five dollar fee, I think was, the answer is, I'm not sure yet. I don't necessarily, I can tell you that our league cannot afford twenty dollars an hour.
Okay. Well, I'm glad you're up here.
Yes, sir.
Because I've got all kinds of information from our standpoint, and this is, I all have a, just courtesy. You know, we figured out, at five dollars an hour, this costs kids a dollar ninety-two per season. At ten dollars an hour, it goes to three dollars and eighty-four per kid, per season. That's the numbers I see. So I don't see a drastic increase. Now, that's softball. At Faulkner, I'd say it'd go on to six dollars and forty-five cents per kid from three twenty-three, and at Golden Road, going to eighteen-ten from nine oh five. So it's not, and that's for the whole season.
So, so the numbers that I came up from, now, we only have the data from the fall, right? We paid five dollars. No one else had baseball, or the West didn't have baseball. We combined the leagues in the fall. So the West comes, the Golden Road, we have a league. So in the fall, we had three hundred eighty-five kids. Our fee that year was roughly four thousand dollars. That comes out to ten dollars a kid per season. So if we go up to twenty dollars a kid, per five dollars, so per five dollars, you're going to go up between roughly ten dollars. And then if we go to twenty dollars, based upon the calculations, only for the fall, the data's not, a whole lot of data there, you're talking about a forty dollar increase per kid. We have families who either are on scholarships, or paying ten dollars a week for the whole season just to play, so. I think our data and your data may be different, there may be reasons why we've been working to try to figure that out.
Well, number one, thank you for loving the kids and having Little League, and being passionate about what you're doing. Leanne, thank you for working with John and the whole group to try to come up with a solution. And I think there has been a great big bit of collaboration, because I remember the meeting we had last year wasn't, wasn't so cool.
No.
And so I'd like where it's gone, and twenty dollars is not till twenty twenty-seven.
Yes, sir.
And you'll have a different mayor up here, so you...
And you won't have me either, so.
So any questions for John?
No.
Or Mr. Greensley, excuse me.
Mr. Grant, one question for you.
Yes, sir.
And it's been years since I've had a son in the Little League program. The banners, the sponsorship banners that you see on the outfield that y'all solicit, because I know that when I was coached, every parent, go get, sell a banner. What are those funds used for? I think the banners, when I did it, were two hundred and fifty dollars, I don't know what they are now. What do y'all use those funds for?
So the banner funds is specifically for umpires. So if we're charging a hundred and twenty dollars per kid, what we're doing right now, we're paying about forty dollars a kid per jersey. Then we have, you know, umpires and all this, but, so every team has to have a sponsor. Now, it doesn't mean every team gets it, but if they do obtain a sponsor, that's five hundred dollars for every field from five pitch minors and majors, which would be eight U, ten U, and twelve U. T-ball's three hundred dollars. So umpires cost us roughly between twenty-two and twenty-four thousand dollars a season. The banner cost that we generate is between fifteen and sixteen thousand dollars. So that's supposed to cover umpires. Unfortunately, umpires are very expensive. To get someone to show up every single day and do that, it costs a significant amount of money to do that. So that banner cost goes to, just solely to paying umpires, or...
Helps also.
Trying to soften that deficit. So our league operates on a net profit, it's a nonprofit, of about two to five thousand dollars a season. And then that profit that we have, profit, goes back into, you know, do we need new mounds? And mounds cost like three thousand dollars. So maybe this year, we say, hey, let's save all that profit, next year, let's go buy two more mounds for the minors and majors, because they deteriorate over time. Same thing with, you know, we've redone the batting cage, which was a few thousand dollars, and we just have to manage that small amount of money to go back and reinvest into the infrastructure of the park. That, I don't, I'm not saying the city doesn't have a plan to do that, but the batting facilities and things like that have to continuously be updated with new turf every five or six years, or new batting cage nets that get deteriorated by tree limbs and, you know, just kids hitting into it, and then pitcher's mounds, and then catcher's gear. I mean, that's really what we, the net profit, two to five thousand, really, it's probably two to four thousand dollars, just goes back into the bat, or the baseball infrastructure, and that's it. There's, that's, that's the, at the end of the day, that's all we have.
Any other questions?
John, I just want to point out, you know, whether we do something today or not, you know, it's up to the entirety of the council. This has been a compromise that we've had discussions over for the past year, and I just want to make a point, and I hope you would agree with me, conversations aren't going to end, and we're going to keep talking, keep working through this. Like you mentioned, you and Leanne have gotten closer on this issue, so I hope the communication is still there.
Hey, the communication for our league, Rose Capital East, is open. We have an open, I mean, everything we have is open to you guys to look at, whether it's finances, whatever you guys want to look at, you can have it. Insurance, charter, whatever it is, you guys are more than welcome to review everything we have, and I know Leanne's an open, you know, this, this whole conversation, I think that I was a little surprised by it the first time, but now we, we tackle the hill, and now it's going down the hill and continuing to grow. So, I mean, that's really where we are. I wasn't prepared to talk today, so.
Well, thank you for coming up and speaking.
Yeah, I want to say, yeah, I do appreciate you being here, and all the other coaches and parents that are here for this, and I'm not surprised that somebody from the east is here doing that, because it was always kind of a leader between the east and west.
Yeah.
But I will say that I do think this is the right direction to go. I think it's difficult, anytime you have change like this, you know, how do you absorb it, how do you digest it? It is, it is hard. I think it's the right way to go, and I hope we will continue the communication that, you know, we keep the price as low as we can keep it, but also try to, you know, get the users to pay for, the people that are using the service to pay for it, so.
Completely agree.
Keep up the work, I would say.
Appreciate it.
Can you do that one more time?
Rose Capital East.
All right. Thank you, John.
Appreciate you guys.
Any other questions for Leanne, or does anybody else wish to speak? John did a great job. All right.
Meet more sponsors.
That's correct. Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Nichols, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, guys, for showing up. You don't have to stay.
It's me again. During the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, the Lindsay Park Insurance Improvement Project initiated, was completed as, was initiated but not completed, as projected before the fiscal year end. The monies available to fund these items became part of the ending working capital of fund balance of the various funds as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four beginning budget isn't being amended to carry forward the necessary funding to complete this project. The items in progress in twenty twenty, Keep Tyler Beautiful was awarded the Governor's Community Achievement Award, presented by Keep Texas Beautiful, which was two hundred ninety thousand dollars. The project did come in over budget, and the remainder of the project will be paid for by the Keep Tyler Beautiful donations in the amount of twenty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. It is requested that the city councils consider the adoption... It is requested that the city councils consider the adoption of ordinance amending the fiscal year 2324 budget to provide funding to complete the Keep Tyler Beautiful Lindsay Park Improvement Project.
Any questions for Leanne?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Leanne.
Welcome.
Oh, you're still up.
I am.
M1.
On Wednesday, February 28, and Wednesday, March 6, the City of Tyler accepted bids to furnish all necessary materials and equipment, superintendents, and labor for the Layla Memorial Pavilion. One bidder submitted bids, which was Smith Builders and Developers, at $74,900. The Layla family recently donated the $67,000, and he actually recently came back, I think two weeks ago, and paid the remainder of that, which was $7,900. They are paying for the entirety of the pavilion. So it is recommended that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to award bid number 24-008 for the Layla Memorial to Smith Builders and Developers to furnish all necessary materials, equipment, superintendents, and labor in the amount not to exceed $74,900.
Any questions for Leanne?
One question. Smith Builders and Developers, have they worked for the city before?
Yes, sir, several. They actually are the ones that renovated Pollard.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, thank you.
Thank you.
M2, Nikki.
Where's your baby?
She is back in the office with Pam, my designated caregiver, so...
Good, good answer.
So I'm here, my name is Nikki Ingram, and I'm a project engineer for Tyler Water Utilities. I'm here today to present agenda item M2 for the Westside Wastewater Treatment Plant Rehabilitation Project. So in October of 2023, Garver presented the Wastewater Treatment Plant Master Plan to Council. Garver performed a condition assessment as part of this master plan that ranked the likelihood of failure versus the consequence of failure for each process. It was found that 13 of the 19 processes at the Westside Wastewater Treatment Plant were in critical and high-risk condition. It was determined it would be more cost-effective and efficient to include the rehabilitation of all the processes in one project. In December of 2023, the Wastewater Treatment Master Plan Scoring Committee met to score RFQs, and Garver emerged as a top-ranked candidate. This project will be broken up into four phases to address the immediate needs of the plant. The first phase is shown in blue and will take place between 2024 and 2027. It has an opinion of probable construction cost of $79 million. It'll include a new headworks facility, new influent pump station, a new odor control facility, new aeration basins, and anaerobic digester improvements, fast track and the fast track sledge lagoon rehabilitation. Phase two is shown in green, and it'll take place between 2027 and 2029. It has an OPCC of $19.2 million and will include the secondary clarifier rehabilitation, chlorine contact basin improvements, and a new Rozwass pump station. Phase three is shown in orange and will take place between 2029 and 2031. It has an OPCC of $17.7 million. It'll include new primary clarifiers, and the existing primary clarifiers will be converted into equalization basins. Phase four will take place from 2031 to 2032 and has an OPCC of $10.9 million. It'll include dewatering facility improvements. So Garver has provided a video presentation that gives a really great visual representation of this project.
The Westside Wastewater Treatment Plant in Tyler, Texas, requires condition and capacity-based improvements to meet the future needs of the plant. Garver's developed a four-phased approach for the improvements to meet the most immediate needs first and to maintain plant operations during construction of the improvements. The first phase of Garver's plan includes replacement of the existing headworks facility and influent pump station. To make room for these facilities while maintaining plant operations, the first-stage trickling filter number one will be demolished. The headworks facility will be sized for the projected peak flow of 47.2 MGD and will include two mechanical screens and one manual bypass screen. The facility will also include two mechanical vortex grid removal units. Spaces will be allocated in the facility to install one additional mechanical screen and one additional grid unit in the future as peak flows increase. The influent pump station will house four design flow pumps and will have space to house two future peak flow pumps. Both the headworks facility and the influent pump station will be covered, and odorous gases will be treated by a new biological odor control system. The second-stage trickling filter number two will be demolished, and three new aeration basins will be built in its place. To address the condition concerns of the existing anaerobic digesters, Garver plans to convert them into aerated sledge holding tanks. The existing digester covers will be removed, and once the new aeration basins are constructed, the temporary surface aerators currently in use at the nitrification basins can be relocated to the sledge holding tanks to provide aeration and mixing. The sledge lagoon will also be improved during this first phase of the expansion. The lagoon will be dredged, and the old liner will be replaced, and a new sledge return pump station will be constructed. In the second phase, the secondary clarifiers will be rehabilitated. Additionally, the walls of the chlorine contact basin will be raised to prevent the facility from flooding during peak rain events. The third phase includes demolition of the remaining second-stage trickling filter to make room for two new 120-foot diameter primary clarifiers to be constructed. The new clarifiers will be constructed at a higher elevation than the existing clarifiers to eliminate the need for intermediate pumping. Once the new clarifiers are constructed, the existing clarifiers can be converted into equalization basins to buffer the peak flow coming into the plant. The final phase of the expansion plan includes improvements to your existing dewatering facility.
And so the engineering contract for this project will include the preliminary design report for all four phases. So we're doing the preliminary design report for all four phases so we can get a more accurate construction cost for each phase. As you can see from this graph, based off of conceptual design, oh, sorry, based off of conceptual design, our estimate can be plus or minus 30% to 50% off of the actual cost. Once we finish preliminary design, our estimate will be plus or minus 15% to 30% off of the actual cost. So this contract will also include the final design and bidding for Phase 1, the final design and bidding for the fast track sledge lagoon rehabilitation, the construction oversight for Phase 1, and construction oversight for the fast track sledge lagoon rehabilitation. So it is my recommendation that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services contract in the amount of $10,939,680 with Garver for the Westside Wastewater Treatment Plant Rehabilitation Project, which will include a preliminary design report for all design phases and final design bidding and construction oversight for both Phase 1 improvements and an expedited sledge lagoon rehabilitation, and adopt a resolution reserving the right to reimbursed expenditures with proceeds of future debt.
So once this is done and finished, do you have any idea what the lifespan of that plant is?
So we'll always have to do maintenance and upkeeping around the plant to keep it in good condition. I know that the master plan is good for, it covered 30 years. The life expectancy of the plant would be about 50 years.
50 years?
Yes. It'll be 50 years.
50 years on the improvements.
Okay.
What is the current capacity, and what would the increased capacity be after final improvements?
So right now, the current capacity is 13 MGD. After these improvements, it'll still be 13 MGD, but we have the potential in the future to raise that capacity.
It has to go to TCQ to get approval to increase that capacity, but, you know, because of kind of the buffer area that we have around there, it probably is, that's pretty feasible. This is also an eight-year project, kind of also put in perspective. The full project that you saw there won't be completed. The estimated time right now is not until 2032.
Sure, are we taking some heat to get this done by outside?
So we have, a lot of our structures in the plant are not working as they should be, and so we're trying to be proactive and get them to where they need to be, which is why we can't just do the whole project in one phase. We're having to address the immediate needs in Phase 1 so we can continue to design the later three phases.
And to kind of go towards your comment there, Mayor, I think, you know, one of the things that we heard back when the Southside Wastewater Treatment Plant, there was some pressure on there a few years ago about, you know, just especially after Cumberland Road had been opened and development was occurring over there, about concerns that were brought forward to TCQ about smell and odor. TCQ came back and said, there's nothing negative, you're within all the, you know, the state and federal requirements on this, but they said, before you touch anything on Southside Wastewater Treatment Plant for improvements beyond what you're currently doing, you better go address Westside Wastewater Treatment Plant, just because of the age of that plant and the needs for improvements over there. And so that was something we heard from TCQ and took and received.
Great question. So this will address the preliminary, first of all, the video is very helpful for people who don't know what all that is, that's good. The preliminary design on all four phases, is that right?
Yes.
Four? But the final design on just Phase 1?
Yes. And then include construction oversight.
So are these fees usually set by percentages like architects do on projects?
No, they're not.
Man, that's a lot. Should have gone into a different business. $11 million? I know we need it. Just wanted to say that.
So it is a very large construction project over the eight years.
It is, it is. True.
One more clarifying question. The 30 to 50 years, and you said it doesn't increase capacity. If we opted to increase capacity, that's what gives us that extra time from the 30 to 50 years if we choose to do that?
So it is my understanding that it'll be 50 years if we don't, yeah, regardless, if we don't do anything. We will have to maintain things around the plant, though, so it's not like we're just going to do this and then don't have to touch it for 50 years. We will still have to maintain things, like a car or something, so...
You might be the only one on council that will check that number 50 years from now.
Hope I'm alive in 50 years.
If I can, I just want to clarify on the timeframe there. So what we're talking about is, when Garver did the master plan, they looked at what our growth was potentially in this surface area where Westside is, and they looked to see what kind of demand we would have at that plant. And so the time period we're looking at, which is a 30 to 50-year time period, specifically 35, I think it was in the study, no expansion is necessary. But what you can see from the improvements that are being done is that it's going to allow for that expansion, because at some point, Westside will always be a plant we need. So we're not going to scrap this plant, you know? Even if we move down south to Southside, Westside will always be there, because it is the heart of what a lot of the basin is in the City of Tyler, so...
Yeah, I know, we've talked about expansion capacity and longevity at Southside, and I think same type of...
Yes, and that will be addressed, once we address Westside, but Westside is the critical one right now.
Yep.
Plus, all of our rural septic pumping, all that goes there, so there's no septic pumping that goes to Southside, it all goes to Westside, right?
All right, any other questions?
Move to approve.
Second. Got a motion by McKeller, second by Haynes. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Nikki.
Thank you.
M3, Kate.
Okay, so maybe a little bit more, maybe not lighthearted, but, so, next, M3. This is for the Lake Palestine Water Treatment Plant Taste and Odor Study. So Tyler Water Utilities provides water to all of our residents within the city, so all of our customers are City of Tyler customers, and they are, well, all of our main customers, primary customers are City of Tyler. We are wholesale providers to Walnut Grove Water Supply Corporation, as well as Community Water and the City of White House. We have two plants, so there's Golden Road, which gets its source water from Lake Tyler, and Lake Palestine Water Treatment Plant, which gets its source water from Lake Palestine. So Lake Palestine has a treatment capacity of 30 MGD. As you are aware, Lake Palestine does experience some seasonal taste and odor issues, mainly attributable to geosmin, but also MIB, which is methylisopropyl, both are taste and odor compounds. Geosmin is the one that typically, when people say, you know, tastes like dirt, that's what that's coming from. So, but those levels are measurable to the human senses at taste and odor at 8 nanograms per liter, which is very, very small. So we currently use, excuse me, we currently use powdered activated carbon and ozone to treat for the taste and odor that comes into Lake Palestine. And just a reminder on taste and odor, it is an aesthetic concern, it is not a regulatory compliance issue, so therefore, our water is safe and exceeds our, exceeds the TCQ and EPA's drinking water standards. So, but we do see a trend, if you look at the graph, this is from 2013 till currently, that green line is the raw geosmin coming into the plant. So back in 2013, 500 nanograms per liter coming into the plant, that was a lot. Well, in 2017, we had a spike of 1,000, and we thought, oh, wow, that's more than we've had to deal with. And just as a frame of reference, if we treat out, or we remove 99% of the geosmin coming in at 1,000 nanograms per liter, that leaves us with 10 nanograms per liter. So that's still detectable. So we had a spike in 2022 of nearly 3,000 nanograms per liter. And so with that, at a 99% removal, it's still 30 nanograms per liter. So we're kind of fighting a difficult battle here. So we typically remove about 92% to 99% of the geosmin and MIB coming into the plant currently with our process. The purpose of this study, though, is to identify what treatment process alternatives we can look at to address these taste and odor water quality challenges, and then we're going to test them and we'll scale them. So this project's going to be delivered in two phases. HDR is first going to do tasks 100 through 300. It's about a three-month time periods, period, so it's very fast. We're going to look, they're going to do, we're going to have a project kickoff meeting and also do a regulatory and process review, and then develop a testing plan. So that second phase is going to be where we actually start testing these different processes that we want to see, see which is most efficient for Lake Palestine moving forward. So like I said, this is a fast process. We'll have this all completed by July of this year, this portion of it, developing that testing plan. So hopefully, in August or September, I can come back to you with a contract amendment for HDR to actually do the testing, do the pilot's testing, scale it up, and develop design improvements to test the, to, excuse me, the design improvements for the existing plant, as well as what future expansions will be necessary at Lake Palestine. So today, I'm recommending that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a professional services contract in the amount of $120,000 with HDR for the Lake Palestine Water Treatment Plant Taste and Odor Project.
Well, I'm extremely excited about this project, and I know Tyler citizens expect their water to have better taste and odor. I'm not saying that it's bad, but it can be better, and I think this is a good example where all of you guys have listened to the residents, and you're responding accordingly, and so I like it. So, thank you. Kate, comments for Kate?
So, is this something new, or are there other communities elsewhere that have had to deal with it?
Oh, yeah, you know, the one that comes to mind is the City of Arlington. They have a lot of issues with this, and so...
Where does it come from?
It, well, it comes from the algae typically.
I mean, take them back to the, how, I guess, the lake was constructed.
So there's a pretty big difference between Lake Tyler and Lake Palestine, the way they were constructed. Lake Tyler, all the land was cleared, it was farmland when that lake was built. Lake Palestine, all the trees were left there, and it was just filled. So what ends up happening is you have a natural organic matter in the lake, which makes these algal blooms, which caused the geosmin and the taste and odor issues, it's easier for them to, there's lots of nutrients for them to take. it's easier for them to, there's lots of nutrients for them to take hold of, which is why we have these taste and odor issues at Lake Palestine.
Okay.
That's why the catfish taste better than Lake Palestine.
I'll just echo what the mayor said, I'm glad we're taking this extra step, just because, as you pointed out, the TCQ says, here's our standard, but we're going above and beyond that, and I'm glad we're taking that, that extra step, just because the base level may be good, it might not be good enough, and so it's good that we're taking this extra step.
So, is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Got a motion by Haney, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? Also, please say aye.
I just want to make a notice that I have several, that just text has said, thank you so very much on that survey.
Oh, good, that's great.
Yes, thank you.
Got a motion and a second, also please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kate.
You're welcome. I'm staying up here, I'm not leaving yet. Don't get rid of me that easily. So, item M four. So, these, these next two will be consent decree items. This is an engineering services contract with KSA for the consent decree capacity work group three alignment analysis. So, we did a hydraulic model back in 2017, eighteen, that pipeline analysis and LNV put together. That model identified undersized sewer collection lines, and they, they were identified as capacity constraints. So, those were separated into three separate groups. So, just to give you an update, Group One, that, that capacity project has been completed, so that's done. Group Two, that is anticipated to bid this summer. And then this is Group Three, so we're having KSA go through and act, do an alignment analysis. So, this includes multiple segments of the city, and I'll show you a map here in a second, but this timeline of the project, you know, with the alignment analysis all the way through construction, March of this year through April of 2027. So, this map shows you, the red lines are the Group One projects, those have already been completed. The blue lines are Group Two, those are the ones that are going to be bidding this summer. And then Group Three are all the yellow lines, so there's quite a bit involved in yellow. This scope of services includes, they're going to, again, analyze the existing site alignments, look for potential better alternatives for those alignments. We've talked about that in the past few meetings, about the importance of looking at all of the options available to us before we decide on what makes the best sense moving forward. And then also, they're going to do some preliminary topographic surveys to ensure that our alignment actually works. And then we're also going to coordinate, we're going to coordinate with the modelers to make sure that those work as well. So, we're going to have alternative summaries, alternatives summaries from this exhibits and opinions of probable cause. This fee is five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So, I'm here to request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with KSA in the amount of five hundred and thirty-five thousand for the consent decree capacity work group three alignment analysis.
Any questions for Kate?
Move to approve, M four.
Second.
Got a motion by Nichols, second by McKell. Any further discussion? Also, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M five.
Okay, M five is additional engineering services for consent decree for the Group Five remedial measures project. The city council approved an engineering services contract for Group Five with KSA in 2022. That included four different packages. The, we also came forward last year with an addendum for KSA for Group Five to do some reroutes after we determined that some of these remedial measures would be better done in a reroute of the, of the gravity lines. So, this addendum, too, includes additional design services to reroute and replace some more creek crossings and other reroutes that we've determined through the process of construction. So, it includes design and survey and construction phase services for a sixty thousand seven hundred dollar engineering fee. So, I request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute an additional services engineering agreement with KSA for the Group Five consent decree remedial measures designed in the amount of sixty thousand seven hundred dollars.
So, you come up here with the sixty thousand dollar items, and you make Nikki come up here for a ten million dollar.
Notice that.
Notice that. Move to approve, M five. Got a motion by Williams, second by McGee. Any further discussion? Also, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kate.
Thank you. Here's Jacob.
Jacob's is one point eight.
Good morning, Mayor, city council.
Good morning.
So, my name is Jacob Yankar, and I'm here to present items M six and M seven, starting with M six for the upper pressure plane elevated storage tank and transmission mains engineering agreement. So, in the fall of 2023, the city council received a presentation from HAF on the City of Tyler Water Model and Master Plan Study. This was a comprehensive study on our entire distribution system with an associated hydraulic model that was developed to aid in identifying existing system constraints and to plan for, for future development and growth in a, in a twenty-five-year planning window. The study analyzed our existing treatment facilities, distribution system, and, as I mentioned, estimated for future growth. So, in the master plan for the distribution system, it was proposed separating our, into four isolated pressure planes. The upper, primary, lower, and cascade, cascades would all be separate pressure planes. The benefit of isolating these pressure planes is more efficient system performance, and that will be seen and observed by our customers and the city staff that are out in the field operating the system. So, after considering our budget restraints, the city staff collaborated directly with HAF to redefine this approach in improving the distribution system. It was clear to city staff that the number one priority was to establish more elevated storage, and this is, the, the purpose of this is to aid in our systems buffering capacity during peak demand. So, this deviation from the master plan was to create two upper pressure planes rather than one. This approach utilizes all the current assets efficiently and reduces the magnitude of additional resources that we have to construct. The two upper pressure planes would be the Frankston and Troup area as UP one, and then the Shiloh and Charleston area as UP two. And then the location of the new elevated storage tank would be in the Frankston area near 155 and Earl Campbell. So, since we have only determined the general area where the tank is to be located, we will likely have multiple sites to consider for the exact location. This is accounted for in the scope of this agreement, along with geotechnical engineering and coordination with the elevated storage tank manufacturers. We're planning to have a one and a half to two million gallon composite tank, and you can see a rendering of what a composite tank looks like here, the, the style of, of tank. The transition main portion of the project, we're estimating up to twelve thousand feet of twelve-inch water line that will serve the new tank and connect the Troup area to, to the Frankston area as far as the new upper pressure plane. Once bidding, advertising, and award of the construction contract has occurred, HAF will be providing construction observation services for both projects, and we currently have a pre-engineering cost estimate between ten and thirteen million dollars based on these variables that we just discussed. So, as mentioned, we're going to break this project into two separate bid packages, one for the elevated storage tank and one for the transition mains that will serve the tank and the pressure planes. Here, we have the anticipated project schedule for both packages. We're estimating right now up to seven months for land acquisition, but hopefully, this process is shortened and, and we can turn around final design quicker, but that's all depending on, on land acquisition. So, construction for, for both of these packages are anticipated to be complete by the end of summer 2027. So, I would like to request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute an engineering services contract with HAF associates for the upper pressure plane elevated storage tank and transition, transmission mains project in the amount of one million eight hundred eleven thousand three hundred and forty-six dollars, and adopt a resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditures with proceeds of future debt.
So, Jacob, if you don't have enough elevated storage, and there's high demand in the summer, and your pressures drop to twenty-six or whatever, what happens?
Well.
Water boiling, others?
We would, we would try to identify the area that, that that pressure drop occurred.
Here it comes, Kate.
I got a stick of gums in it, but yes, so if it drops below twenty PSI or stays around thirty-five for an extended period of time, a boil water notice is required. I know, that's what you're trying to do.
So, it's just about having a pretty water tank in the air.
No.
Keep from.
Yeah, keep from. Okay, any questions for Jacob?
I got a question. I know what an elevated storage tank is. What, what's the upper pressure plane referred to? I mean, I know it's, I assume it's an area, but the upper pressure plane?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, here in this slide, the, the pink areas are actually higher elevation in town, and so.
Upper elevation?
Upper pressure plane is higher elevation, and we're going to try to isolate those higher elevations and those higher connections, so that we see increased pressure in the higher elevations, and then we see more moderate pressure in the lower elevations. So, rather than having a, a large difference in high pressure where it's low elevation and low pressure where it's high elevation, everything gets to be a little bit closer together as far as the, the PSI that's delivered to the meter.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Move to approve, M six.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Williams, any further discussion? Also, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M seven.
Alrighty, so, item M seven is for the engineering services agreement with Elige Engineering for the 2024 water main improvements two-inch replacement project. So, the goal of the water main improvements program is to replace outdated water lines throughout the distribution system. Currently, the city has around nine miles of two-inch galvanized water lines that are dating back to the forties, along with countless dead-end mains. The water main improvements program focuses on replacing these two-inch galvanized lines and looping the dead-end mains, both of which help ensure a quality and safe product for our customers in the years to come. There's a level of coordination with the streets department regarding the asphalt overlay program as well to schedule the utility replacement prior to the overlay to avoid street cuts in a, in a newly overlaid street. Here, we have a list of the streets that will be touching and the replace, and replacing the existing two-inch water main with the new six-inch PVC water line. These straits are on the future overlay list, so upgrading the water line is step one for the area. We're planning to replace over eleven thousand linear feet of line in this project. We have enlisted Elige Engineering to perform the, the engineering services, design, and construction observation for the 2024 improvements, improvements program. Elige Engineering is committed to turning this design around in six months, and we're expecting a nine-month construction schedule. The pre-engineering cost estimate is currently two point four nine million dollars for construction. So, I would like to request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute an engineering services contract with Elige Engineering for the 2024 water main improvements two-inch replacement project in the amount of two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, and adopt a resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditures with proceeds of future debt.
Any questions for Jacob?
So, Kate.
So, on the, the dead-end mains, we hear that a lot, looking dead-end mains, how does that happen? I mean, is that something that was done, we don't do anymore, or how does that happen?
So, we, now, we try to avoid a dead-end main at all costs. Previously, it was more common practice, but now we have, we also have development rules for automatic flushing devices and things like that if the situation is not possible to.
So, we're, we're not still installing dead-end mains or allowing them to be installed, I guess, or?
We minimize it as much as possible.
Okay.
For the, the codes that we, we have.
Not never, but almost.
Yeah.
Move to approve, M seven.
Second. Got a motion by Williams, second by Nichols, any further discussion? Also, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We've got three police here today. I feel protected. All right, we're down to the consent agenda. Do we want to approve this presented, or have anything pulled?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull CA eight.
CA eight? Okay, why don't we discuss CA eight, and then we'll come back and approve the consent agenda? You fine with that, Deborah?
Yes.
Mr. C, may I hear, somebody have a?
We can, Kate?
Kate.
Can you kind of give a brief on this one about?
Can you give us a brief on this?
The replat of Lot 3A on, out at Lake Tyler.
And then we have two cards when you're done.
Okay, well, just briefly, because I think they'll probably explain all of it during the cards. This is just a replat that was requested of, of my office to look at the potential replat of the 378 MSL line, and it's at Lake Tyler, that's the, the line, the shoreline that's along. So, it's just a property line replat. There was a space up near the road between these two properties previously. There was a dispute between the two parties, the two lessees, about where that fence should go, because there was a gap between the two of them. One of them wasn't happy with the placement of the fence. And so, I thought that this replat could potentially resolve that issue, because we'd have clear delineation whose property went to where. And so, that's, that's why the replat was presented to you.
Okay, any questions?
But I'll be here for any other questions after.
Okay, don't go anywhere.
I won't.
All right, two cards. I've got Natalie Osborne that is for it, and Hank and Nikki Baker that are opposed to it. So, Natalie Osborne, are you present?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to come up and speak?
Sure.
Cassandra, can you put a clock on five minutes?
Yes, sir.
If you can just state your name and address for the record, please.
Natalie Osborne, 17790 South Point Road in White House, 75791. Thank you for letting me speak today. I did bring some things if you have any questions. Sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. I had put some notes in my phone, and of course, my phone dies. So, anyway, we're going to wing it, is that okay?
Yes.
So, I know Ms. Dietz kind of explained why we decided to replat. We purchased the property two and a half years ago, and we received the plat whenever we purchased it. It was from 1999. Honestly, we didn't look much to the plat, right? We just received it, and, and that was it. Anyway, the plat was brought to our attention, and so we wanted to have the city look at it, so we set a meeting with Ms. Dietz and Mr. Hassel, and went over that 1999 plat. Well, they, we all realized that there wasn't a lot of extensive work done to that property by the previous owners, not us, that had, would probably change the trajectory of the lot itself because of the way the lake works and that cove and everything. And so, they actually suggested to me that I have a surveyor resurvey it, so we could see what was going on. The previous owner actually put in a, a seawall and backfilled a whole lot of dirt from that seawall. I have a email, I had emailed her and asked what all she had done, and I've got that printed for y'all if you'd like to see it. But she explained that she had put a lot of dirt back there and raised the property and, and all this stuff, so therefore, it made sense to look at the resurvey. So, we did, and it was resuraveled, and sure enough, it was different, and so the surveyor did present that to Ms. Dietz, and she approved it. And we really felt like it would do two things. One, this property is just really strange. We live, actually live in a boathouse. We don't have a house on the property. And by making this plat current, it actually, I think, will benefit the South Point subdivision, because it will actually give us some room to, or somebody some room to possibly build a home on that property, and if it's not replatted, that possibility is probably not there. And then the other thing that it will do is Ms. Dietz mentioned that there is just, was a weird gap, that no one, none of us knew what it was on the 1999 plat. And I can, I've got some things printed, I don't know if y'all want them. I don't know if y'all want them. I'll be happy to pass them out to you if you want to look at them. It's a plat, and it shows the gap is so little, you can't even hardly see it. So we were, really were not even aware of it. But once we started looking at it, no one knew what it was. And we tried to get explanation of what it was by talking with Lake Authority and by talking with Ms. Dietz. And it was explained to us that nobody really understood what that gap was, but there was evidence of there being a drainage area there at one time. And so there is communication from the City Council, actually, from back in nineteen ninety-nine that explains that that drainage area was there. And so, but the drainage area was on this, basically our side of the property. And so, anyway, that's the reason why we are trying to replat it. So I have some things if y'all would like to look at, but I'm here really just for questions because our goal is to get this resolved. We have wonderful neighbors. We have loved being beside them for the last two years and definitely don't want to cause any conflict. It just was brought to all of our attention when he decided to put up a fence, and none of us were aware of it.
Anybody have any questions for Osborne? Do you have a copy of the plat?
I do.
Is that something you gave to us?
Yeah, I have, yeah. I've just got, I'm just going to kind of over-
How's that it?
Probably over TMI, but if you have any questions, it should basically just, everything that I just talked about, the first thing that you see is the plat.
Isn't someone that could just put that on the overhead?
Mm-hmm.
I do think that the next speaker, Mr. Baker, I think he has it on his reservation.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So the first thing that you have in front of you is actually what we received when we purchased the property. We received this plat from the homeowner as well as what was pictured on the listing of the property.
I'm sorry, your time-
Oh, okay, okay.
I think we've got enough.
Okay. If you have any questions, just feel free to let me know. Thank you.
All right. Hank, Nikki Baker, y'all coming as a team or?
Yeah.
Name and address for the record, please.
We are Hank and Nikki Baker. Our address is seventeen seven thirty White House, Texas, seven five seven nine one. We've lived at the residence for twelve years.
Can you put that timer on? Two minutes? No, kidding. Five.
I'm prone to speak a little slower than faster, but okay. All right, here, first off, good morning. Again, Hank and Nikki Baker, we're neighbors over there. We have very good relations. The issue here, I want to start off with, is that on the replat request that came up, well, we didn't see this until Friday when the agenda was published, but the replat request has some land that is previously in the city, is now allocated towards the applicant. And that's where we take issue. We don't understand why that area, which has been a drainage area, would be that way. Let me show you this part right here. How do I make this? So if you look up over here, you'll see the highlighted area, and this was given to us by Joseph Pollard with Matu's. He talked actually to both of us last fall and clarified that, yes, there is a gap potentially in there between the two because this is an important drainage area. It's roughly about fifteen and a half feet, okay? If you look next on their replat request, it's a little bit hard to see, but the very top right that's up there, that there is, you see there's no gap that winds up being there. That's where their surveyor has incorporated what we call the city land, the strip of land that's been in there between us, has incorporated that into theirs. Now, Mr. Pollard was asked about if there was any discrepancies earlier when this nineteen ninety-nine plat was done specifically, and he answered to both us and the Osbournes that no. Yeah, there were some internal discussions. Latu's did the work. There were some internal discussions with the City Council at that time about whether that should be included in one plat or the other. Obviously, the City Council decided not to, and that's why the plat was approved the way it is. And it's an important drainage area that we'll wind up showing to you here in just a second. Now, a couple of things I want to clarify real quick, some information about how stuff is done on the lake. The lake elevation is three seventy-six. The next important concept is an elevation of three seventy-eight. On the three seventy-eight elevation, that's where the city says your land that you own, your legal property, is between that three seventy-eight up to the road frontage. And then below the three seventy-eight is city land, okay, all the way to the lakeshore. Now, you're still entitled to use that land, potentially fence that land if you want to. In fact, the city wants you to take care of that, okay? But that is deemed a sealand, so the three seventy-eight elevation becomes very important from a property land standpoint, but not from a use standpoint. You can use the property that is below the three seventy-eight for your own benefit. You cannot, you cannot build on it or anything, but you can use it for your benefit as if you own it. So when we showed this survey request to Matu's on Monday, his first question was, well, why, what's the justification for including this city land that previously was not on anybody's plat and now be on the new replat request? So we're at a loss for that. There's maybe a float that there was a change in the elevation, but at the same time, we're kind of going, why does that really exist? Again, this is an important drainage area in there. And one reason why I think it's real important from a policy standpoint is that now you're talking about, this is previously city land. If you allocate it to any one person, then they start to have the rights for this land, including potentially the opportunity to fence this land and encumber then the entire city property. So we have a concern about that. Let me show you just real quick some thoughts about the drainage.
You can see in Exhibit Three, the proximity of the city land to our land and to our neighbor's land. So the city land is that highlighted brown part. To the immediate left of the city land is our driveway, and to the right, further down, is our neighbor's driveway. So you can see why we have such a vested interest in this city area, even though it's only fifteen feet, it's literally in our front yard. This is a picture, we took this picture probably about ten years ago. The city land that we're referring to, this is how it appeared ten years ago, this overgrown area that you see behind our chain link fence, that's our chain link fence and the overgrown area. Really, the drainage there was terrible. It stayed swampy. You can see under our chain link fence, that's basically how it looks on the city land. This is another, just closer picture of the same area. Again, that's our chain link fence. To the left, the overgrown part is what we're referring to as the city land, the mysterious part that no one knows what to do with. We had permission at that time with the overgrown area. We started working closely with the Lake Authority. At that time, it was James Weaver and Robert Hassel on ways to improve the drainage for our neighbors, for us, and for the city land. Basically, all the water on South Point drains down through our front yard and through the city land. Now, this picture, pardon the children, but this is after a large rain. So you can see the amount of water that we're actually talking about. The water coming through this drainage ditch goes through our front yard. The water up on the side on the right is the water coming through the city land after we've already cleared the land. You can also see that we had permission from James Weaver, from the Lake Authority, to extend our chain link fence across the city land, this is ten years ago, and connect to our previous neighbor's column. This is actually, oh, we, after the chain link fence, we did a major remodel on our home, and part of the remodel was removing the chain link fence.
So where it comes down to is, if you look real quick on these survey plats that are up there, this is where the fencing issues could be. I apologize to you. If you wind up allocating some of the land to the city, then you have fencing issues that are also there.
Okay, thank you. Do y'all have any questions for the Bakers?
Hank, y'all, you and Nick, you said y'all have lived there twelve years, and y'all have been maintaining this because it is at your front door, so we appreciate y'all taking care of that.
Can I say blood, sweat, and tears when you've been maintaining it?
So what questions do we have? I mean-
I mean, may I say what our recommendation would be is that the city land, I think it's real important from a city policy standpoint, is that the city retain the use of its land. There's no reason to allocate this drainage land to any one property owner or the other. And if you wind up allocating it one to the other, then you're starting to take sides about who gets it. And the other aspect would be, or how you can consider abandoning it, which in essence, if you wind up giving the city property to somebody, well, then they have the right to use it again from the road frontage all the way down, and that in essence is abandoned. So if you want to go there, that's a different discussion. I think the simple thing is that right now, the city just winds up saying, our best policy is we need to retain our land. You don't change property quarters. You don't get any fencing issues. It's very straightforward if you just keep your land.
So Kate, they're going anywhere. Does staff have, does staff have a recommendation on this?
I mean, the sides that have been presented, really, it's, there's no, we originally recommended the replat, but based on the opposition, really, it doesn't matter one way or another to city staff because this land that we're talking about remains city property between the two leaseholds. So we still maintain that. We still will maintain ownership of that property. So in all honesty, if you want to reject the replat, that's fine. If you want to go with the replat, that's fine as well. It doesn't really change the city's stance on it.
So you're saying it doesn't matter if we accept the plat or reject the plat, the city's still going to have ownership of that strip?
Yes, and we have full control over what's-
Well, do you, what do you claim?
This strip, this, okay. One thing to note, though, is this is all the city's property. This is leasehold property. Nobody owns the land. We own the land as the city. So this fifteen-foot strip that we're talking about is just up at the fence line. It's mere square footage. It's not a massive amount of land that we're transferring over.
It's not part of the lease right now.
Right now, it is not a part of the lease, correct. The leasehold property.
Can it be built on?
No. And even this replat really doesn't help much in building on this piece of property. It's a very, as Ms. Osborne said, it's a very, it's a difficult piece of property to build on due to the a hundred-foot setback that is required.
And there are, Council and Mayor, there are a lot of different interests out there at the lake, including leasehold, city property, and then the different regulations and requirements that the city has on different pieces of property. That can range depending on where the property is located, how it's located by the three eighty-foot line. And so it can be more of a complicated issue, and that is why we always have a review of whether someone is wanting to do something on a piece of property that is either in the leasehold or in the leasehold that is a part of what city controls more strictly. It has to go through the Water Department and the Director in order to determine, you know, what they can do, when they can do it, and how they can do it. And specifically on the property that is below the three seventy-eight. And so there are a lot of issues with respect to that. That's what I wanted to say. It's not cut and dry, not truly black and white, but what Kate said is absolutely correct, that all of it is city property, and city has the ability to regulate it as it needs to.
So Deborah, are you saying that we should possibly table this to further study it or that it's complicated lake property and it's sometimes a little bit of the Wild, Wild West of the lake?
It is complicated as it stands now. I don't, I am not uncomfortable with the recommendation of the Water Director that as it is now, it could stay because that is fine. If you are considering any changes, which the replat might do, then I would feel more comfortable if it was tabled. If you are deciding and thinking that as it is now, which is the recommendation that Kate has given you, and you reject the replat, it is as it is, and that is fine.
So I think we're probably having the same conversation that Council had years ago where they recommended leaving it because we said that it's been before Council before years ago.
Correct.
And they left it because we need to own that drainage, have good access, no complication. We own it anyway, so why even cloud it? So I-
Okay, question, okay. Kate, on this, it's fifteen feet. Why would it not be offered to both of the leaseholders, lessees, since it's right in between them?
Well, it's, it's not really property that anything can be done with.
Right.
And all, like, really, it was just trying to straighten out a fencing issue. We tend to get involved in a lot of these disputes out at the lake, and so it was a, just based on, Ms. Osborne coming to me, I was not aware of the opposition from Mr. Baker until just recently. So that is why the replat was recommended and why, it's not like, do you want to explain the difference in, you know, why it wasn't offered to both?
When we talk about offering, obviously, we're looking at a sale of a city-owned property, but with that out at the lake, it's purely leasing. And so we don't normally look at, you know, offering one or offering the other. Wherever the plat has originally been, and if that has worked, that's where that lot is. We do get occasionally requests from the leaseholders to change that, and we usually just look at that change in focus unless a neighbor comes forth with opposition. Does that answer?
What's the size of this property again?
Well, it was the size of the entire property?
No, the area in question.
Well, it's fifteen feet.
The Bakers had a great, I think it's a picture of it.
You want to see that?
Fifteen by fourteen, fifteen.
There it was. There you go. There we go. Yes, aerial you had. That was a good one.
The area is fifteen and a half feet that the city owns, and we're not even requesting that it be given to us. We think that it's in the best interest of the city for the city to maintain control of this simply because it is such a drainage issue for our front yard and for the city. And we planned to live in South Point for the rest of our lives, but we don't know. Perhaps we sold our house, well, the next people, just like the Osbournes, who bought the property, wouldn't know the history of the property, wouldn't know how much work had gone into the drainage, and may end up trying to, I don't know, do something else with the property.
Now, my first thought about fencing, so if you look right over here just real quick. So if you see those survey plats that are up there, the ones most of the fence is what the survey put up. The one on the right side is Osborne's property line. The one on the left side is ours, the city land.
So it's that gap that we're talking about?
That is that gap. So the issue, this is the convention within the city with the lake, you know, which is an important, like I said, unique aspect of some of the lake. So you're entitled to fence generally from your property corner to the lake. By passing the three seventy-eight, otherwise, that's how you would actually get your property secured if you want to. Currently, if they want to put up a fence, they use their property line. They use their property line, and we use our property line. Nobody has the right to put a fence around the city land. If they're, if anybody is allocated then the property at the road frontage, even though it's a few feet of road frontage, then they have, that property owner has a right of use below the three seventy-eight line, which would include running a fence down that way. Now, Ms. Dietz has appropriately said, she's adamant that won't take place, and I fully appreciate the, her commitment to that aspect, but the custom is that your property coordinator is allowed to do that. So that's what the change becomes. We don't want anybody to be able to encumber that property into their own.
Kate, did you have something to say, then, Ms. Osborne, you can come back up?
Kate and Deborah have some clarification.
So just quickly, two points on that. Just because it's custom and it does happen does not mean that it will be allowed to happen. And this property, like we've spoken of, is very different than most properties. I'm trying to go back to the plat to show you. Okay, in this picture, it appears as that the whole that drainage ditch is going to be allocated to that leasehold on the right. It is not. It is just, if you can see, can I do the pointer here? It's right here, just this tiny piece of property. You can see on the replat that you have, it's the fifteen-foot right there, that whole drainage ditch, that belongs to nobody but the city, and it's not in the lease. It's not in the replat. I just want to be clear on that as well.
We have been through this in some recent litigation where it's always been the city's position that the leaseholder owns what is on the lease survey boundaries, what is on the map, and everything else is within the city's control. And primarily, we strictly control what is below the three eighty-seven.
Ms. Osborne, did you have anything else to add? I'll see you back there with your hand up.
Thank you. If you looked at the papers, one of my questions is if you look at the plat, what we're talking about-
about is on our plat. This replat actually has nothing to do with the Baker's property. The Baker's property line is very clear of where their property line is. And so, everything that we're talking about is not on their side of their property line. And so, and I showed you both, gave you what we got at the, when we closed, that showed our property. But I also showed you, or I gave you this, that he also gave you, that Matush gave us. And if you'll note, it's marked, he, Matush highlighted it and put this footage there because I had called him and I said, "As far as I know, you're not supposed to have an unplatted area on a plat," and this is on our plat. If you look at his plat, it's not on his plat. The unplatted area is not on the Baker's plat. It's on our plat. And so, I did ask him about that, and he wrote that fifteen-foot in there. And that was one of my questions with Mrs. Dietz, is that, you know, that is a concern because as long as that unplatted area is there, there's always going to be a question about where the property is and who has access to that three-seventy-eight. If you look at the last picture in here, on the Baker's property, there used to be a chain-link fence that divided the two properties. And I did include an email from Mrs. Medley Urbine that she emailed me and explained to me, because of course, I didn't know the history on the property. So, she explained to me that the Bakers had called and asked her if she could, they could take down the fence because they did do once, some work in that area. And then, I also showed a picture of what the property looked like when we bought it. That drainage area was still very treed right there, and we had cleaned that up. And I showed a picture of my husband out there cleaning it up as well. So, we've done work out there as well, and of course, I really appreciate all the work that the Bakers did before we purchased the property. But I know similarly, we have a neighbor that recently, he had had this property for four years, and he had put a lot of expense into it, putting a tree line of evergreen trees down the, his property line, he thought. And basically, what happened is people bought the property next door, they came and surveyed it, and found out that that wasn't his property line. Even though he had taken care of that property, put a lot of money into it, they didn't give that property to him. It was still that other person's property. And this is the city's property.
I'm going to wrap it up there in a second.
Okay, every lake lot, if you look, if you're not familiar with lake property, it can get very confusing. And one of the reasons why it can get confusing is that everybody has three-seventy-eight property completely around their property. That is like, but we have access to that property. And just because I pick up trash and stuff like that on the Baker's side of the cove, it wouldn't give me the right to go over there and utilize that three-seventy-eight property that's in their area. And so, you know, like I said, this replat doesn't affect him. It's on the other side of his property line.
Thank you. All right, thank you all. We're going to, we're going to make a decision up here. Kate, just, go ahead. Just a question for you.
Yes.
Should we look at tabling this today so that we can get a better idea of what we're going to potentially do on the replat so that we're not doing what the council did in nineteen ninety and kind of pushed it down the road? Or are we better off to deny the replat, leave everything as is, and move forward?
If I, if I may, I would, it's, given that, it sounds like there are complicated issues in terms of interest in what the city's history or future needs to be about that piece of property that is drainage, it may take us longer than tabling it today and bringing it back within a couple of weeks or a couple of months even. And so, we'd like some time to review it. And as, in terms of status quo right now, that is a reasonable place for it to remain until we look at the issue.
That gets to the point where, you know, the staff time spent on this piece of property, you know, right now, the status quo of it is, you know, for staff, and this is where Kate kind of came up and talked about the fact that we, you know, between the two property owners, you know, we have, you know, no interest in anything other than kind of the status quo as is. And so, you know, the question of tabling, like, is there any type of, any resolution between what is now kind of a neighboring dispute on the property versus just leaving as is with the denial, which is, you know, ultimately, a denial gets you to a point of where, you know, you're able to go spend time and focus on the stuff that, you know, the other, all the other water and wastewater items that were approved today. And this one kind of stays as is.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to deny it because I believe the applicant, if there is future study, they could come back and ask for a replat later, and so that way, it doesn't need to be tabled indefinitely. So, I go ahead and make a motion to deny the request to replat.
Second. Who's second?
Second.
All right, we got a motion from Haney, second by Nichols, to deny C eight. Any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye. Opposed? C eight just denied. All right, we've got the remainder of the consent agenda to approve, presented less, C eight. Move to approve consent agenda, C eight, one through C eight, seven. Got a motion by Curtis, second by Haney. Any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. City manager's report.
To Councilman Nichols' dismay, I have like four pages of notes. So, I'll try to make them quick. This one, just kind of-
Bring Kate back up for this.
You can, you can put me on like a three-minute clock. So, renovation with decomposed granite and fresh sod on field six of Golden Road Park has been complete as of March twentieth. And baseball season is in full swing, as y'all had a great conversation about today. The Rose Capital East Little League posted their Facebook the following message yesterday. We always appreciate when they kind of give us a shout out. You may have noticed over the last few weeks that our five-pitch field has been getting some work done. The resurfacing of the five-pitch field is the latest improvement to the Rose City East Little League facilities at Golden Road, made possible through our amazing partnership with the city of Tyler. While the five pitch isn't quite ready to be played on, the city has installed base anchors and temporary fence on field two to ensure there's no interruption to our season.
Did you say that Cassandra had you on the clock?
Yes.
Thank you, Cassandra. You interrupted my time here. You know, I demand my time back, sir. We are so thankful for the city's support of Rose City East Little League and all the baseball players that come through our programs, and we can't wait to see the leagues hit the dirt on the five-pitch field soon. And so, that goes, you know, it's earlier today, like I said, you had the baseball out here, and they really are, it is a great partnership that has been developing and building, and so, we're glad to have that. I'll skip about the airport. By the way, we received a zero discrepancy FAA inspection last week, and so, that's always something we're glad to know that, how safe things are out there. A major thing that kind of happened that we've been getting a lot of gratitude on, and it's something the council has been taking action over the past year on, which was the opening of the Grande Boulevard and Old Noonday traffic signal, making that operation. And so, last, or two weeks ago, the traffic signal at West Grande and Old Noonday was turned on and is running full colors for all approaches. There's still some work items being completed, but the intersection has been operating as signalized, and this will provide increased safety to the motors through the area. And like I said, we've already been receiving just multiple thanks from especially the neighbors and residents that are in that area for making that, making that happen. And this is a season of the year where there is some incredible things going on, as y'all all know. Azalea Trails kicked off last week and are in full bloom. Mayfair Grand opening is scheduled for next week, Thursday, April fourth, at 5:30. We will have the Tuxedo Cats performing. There'll be food, there'll be dancing. The mayor will be leading that. And it is, we are very just excited about this and getting it up and operational and having it open to the community. In fact, for the council, immediately after this, we invite you to go over to the Mayfair Building, where we'll give you a tour so y'all can get a special behind the scenes. And then, the solar eclipse then happens on that Monday, the April eighth. You can go get your glasses, and it's something I'm very proud of, staff, looking at opportunities to how we can kind of make some revenue off of this. Go get your glasses for two dollars a pair at the Downtown Visitor Center. We have the silent disco that Candace, is she still here?
Yeah.
No, Candace ran off. I'm excited about it. I could take my minutes back because of the silent disco. And so, this is one we're for, over at Pollard Park, Councilman Curtis will be over there leading that dance. Of, for, you know, people can sign up, I think it's ten dollars an hour to go do your silent disco. And so, we're kind of really excited about this, especially Councilman Curtis dancing. And then, of course, we'll have on April eighth, the actual eclipse date itself, events at the square. And then, Chief Kobel will be leading the emergency operations center to where we're making sure that we don't have any incidents or problems during the eclipse, especially immediately afterwards with kind of the traffic issues that we're expecting.
Yeah.
Amen.
I got some other stuff. Thank you all for coming to support this. Yeah, what else do you want, sir?
All right, anybody have any comments for the city manager before we go into executive session? Great. The city council may go into executive session regarding any item posted on the agenda as authorized by Title V, Chapter 501 of the Texas Government Code. Notice is hereby given, the city council may go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions of the government code. Under Texas Government Code, Section 5501.074, personnel matters deliberation regarding the following, the employment duties and evaluation of the city manager. Any final action by the city council will be taken in open session. I don't expect any action today. We'll be gone probably ten, fifteen minutes at the max. So, we're going to executive session, we'll be back. So we're going to executive session, we'll be back.